Welcome to the May 4th meeting, the Murfreesboro City Council. Today is a special day in our country. Today is National Day of Prayer. Today started at 6:30 this morning with the Sharp family, Cliff and Jane Sharp, had the 20th Annual Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. And that's the mayor's with an S, not an apostrophe S. So all of the Rutherford County mayors were in attendance. So if you will bow with me, we'll say our prayer and then we'll move into our Pledge of Allegiance. Father, thank you for this day, for the ability to live in a country where we can come and have differing ideas, we can have discussion, Lord, and we can all try to do that in the betterment of our community. I thank you for the things that are spoken and unspoken, for those who are going through illness, Lord, we ask you to lift them up, Lord, that you give those individuals strength. Father, we say a special prayer for our Murfreesboro Police Officer today who lost her home. We pray that the community will rally around her. Lord, we just ask for strength and compassion that she is going to have to deal with. Father, we live in a blessed community. And there are things that we deal with here that sometimes give us pause and give us the ability to be able to stress. But, Lord, we have things in this community that not many other people have, and we thank you for that. Lord, give us the wisdom to be able to deliberate tonight in a way fitting to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
My Pledge of Allegiance, the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If it's, do we have anyone here who's presenting the proclamation for Drinking Water Week? I mean, Darren, the whole agenda is for you tonight, so this proclamation might as well be as well. If it's okay, I'm going to read the proclamation just sitting here as opposed to going over there, if that's okay with y'all. So this month, Ms. Seabert, at the Murfreesboro Water Resources, every year we have National Drinking Water Week. So whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas drinking water serves a vital role in daily life, serving essential purpose to health, hydration, and hygiene needs for the quality and life of our citizens, and whereas tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support of our economy and quality of life, whereas the hard work performed by the entire water sector, designing capital projects, operators ensuring the safety and quality of drinking water, or a member of a pipe crew maintaining the infrastructure that the community relies on to transport high-quality drinking water from its source for consumers, taps, and whereas the coronavirus pandemic has shown a light on the importance of drinking water for health, hydration, and hygiene needs, whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend, and whereas the citizens of our city are called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution, practice water conservation, and get involved with their water by familiarizing themselves with it. Now therefore, I shame McFarland, Mayor of the City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, on behalf of the entire City Council, to hereby proclaim May 7th through the 13th, 2023, to observe Drinking Water Week, and ask that all citizens join me in expressing our appreciation to the City of Murfreesboro's Water Resources personnel for their hard work and dedication. Cheers, Mr. Gore. All right, we'll move into your consent agenda. You have eight items on the consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be removed?
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move to new business. You have ordinance 23017, setting the fiscal year 24 water and sewer rate. This is first reading ordinance 23017. Mr. Gore.
Mayor McFarland, thank you, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present this this evening. I get this up here. Just, this is a very, I provided this rate change and this rate design to you last April, and nothing has really changed. I know this table's a little busy, but what we were proposing for the FY24 rates on the minimum monthly charge for sewer, 50 cent increase, but we would be taking down the commodity charge by 17 cents, and that would be roughly 83 cents deduct on average bill. So a net negative 33 cents. We're asking for a dollar increase on the residential water bill, no increase on the commodity. That again is the dollar. So you're looking at a 67 cents per month increase based on our current proposed ordinance. Kind of pushing that forward to FY25 and 26, we're looking at a 78 cents increase next year, and then the following year, again, a 77 cent increase. That's, those are about 1% increases per year. Looking at the water charge adjustments, this would affect 5 eighths inch meters through two inch meters, so any, from a dollar to a $1.72 on the minimum bill. On the sewer side, we're again asking for a 50 cent increase on the minimum, and reducing the $5.67 per thousand gallons to $5.50 per thousand gallons. And I've got the fiscal impact in there in your memo on what we think that those increases in the minimum would create, as well as the decrease in the commodity revenue. So that's it, very quickly. I do have a lot of charts and graphs I can pull out of my hat if you need them, but I, 67 cents per month is what will impact the average residential water and sewer customer based on the current design.
Any questions for Mr. Gore about this, our water and sewer rate?
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move to resolutions. We have Resolution 23R11. This is for unclaimed property. Ms. Brown?
This is the annual request to the state to reimburse us or to repay the unclaimed property remitted by the city for any outstanding property that remains unclaimed and has met the required holding period.
Any questions for Ms. Brown?
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move on motion. We have Cleary Construction Airport Pavement Maintenance Contract. Ryan?
Good evening, Council. I brought to you a request for a motion to approve a contract with Cleary Construction. They have gone through the bid process and have been awarded the project to do several pavement maintenance out at the airfield, including an addition of a paved stopway on the north end. The runway threshold needs to be displaced due to some obstructions, as well as going to be doing some crack repair and seal coating on the runway and the ramps, and doing some fresh paint. The project is 90% federally funded, as well as 5% state-funded. Our small portion of $965,000 is currently funded through our CIP, which has already been reserved on one project. The other part of the motion request is to transfer that to this project, the other project being canceled. Any questions?
What's our, we've, just so we can make sure that we announce to the public, what's the timing on this?
So we're hoping to start it this summer. June 15th is when we hope to start the project with not taking more than 30 days is the goal.
Because the airport's going to be shut down, correct?
Correct. The runway, the taxiway will be, is going to get milled and overlaid, so it won't be available, and portions of the ramps will be unavailable as well while crack seal and sealing's being done.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Abstain.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we're going to move to, thank you, Ryan. All right, we're going to move to fiscal year 22 CIP fund real, reallocation for Manson and Fortress project. Mr. Griffith?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. We have a request to reallocate FY22 proceeds for the improvements to the Manson Fortress intersection. Currently Fortress Boulevard is eight lanes wide near the intersection of Manson and Fortress Boulevard. The design is not optimal for movement of traffic and proves difficult for vehicles to access commercial properties between Manson Pike and Bill Smith Drive. We completed a study, our consultant completed the study in January of 2022, and staff has retained engineering services to perform a traffic access evaluation of the area and actually complete plans for improvements to that section of roadway. We've got a sketch that shows the proposed improvements included in your packet. The estimated cost of the project is $1 million, which will be funded from reallocated FY22 bond and loan proceeds from, available from deferred projects. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Griffith?
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
When do we think construction will start on this?
We're just starting to design, so it'll probably be towards the end of the year. We've got one tract of access easement, so just depending on that how it goes, but we should get started by the end of the year on it.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, we'll move into contract for construction for Gateway Boulevard Extension.
Yes, we've got an agreement for construction of Gateway Boulevard Extension Project. This project includes the extension of Gateway Boulevard, about three tenths of a mile to the south to make connection to Robert Rose Drive. This extension is a two-lane curb and gutter section with sidewalks on each side as outlined in the 240 major thoroughfare plan. Project also incorporates a traffic signal at the new intersection of Gateway Boulevard and Robert Rose Drive. Sessions paving was the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $2,387,982. The engineer's estimate was a couple hundred thousand dollars lower than that, but we think we're still experiencing some, a little bit higher than the normal bids due to high labor and material costs. The construction costs are within the total project budget and are funded by FY19, '21, and '22 CIP budgets. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Griffith?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move into item 14. This is the Gateway Boulevard Construction Administration Contract.
Yes, sir. This is just a contract with the consultant, EOLI, that did the actual design of it, just to help us with the construction administration during the, during the project. Their estimate for professional services is $63,120, and again, will be included in the FY19, '21, and '22 CIP budgets. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So move.
Second. Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. All right, we'll move to item 15, renewal of managed security service. This is Infotech. Mr. Jarrett?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. IT is requesting approval for a new contract that will allow for the continued use of our cybersecurity monitoring service. This service provides 24-hour monitoring of network traffic throughout the city and will notify and assist IT staff in mitigation and restoration of city services in the event of a cyber attack.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you, Matt. All right, we'll move to item 16. This is amended and restated agreement with Waste Away for the Qualified Biogas Facility.
Mayor and Council, again, thank you for the opportunity to come before you. This, as stated in the communication form, this amended and restated agreement with Waste Away is really in lieu of the design agreement that was required as part of the original agreement. So here on the slide, I don't, won't go through all these bullets, but effectively, we refined the scope of the design and the deliverables from Waste Away so that we could ensure that progress was commensurate with payments. And lastly, we reallocated portions of the scope of the fee. The two and a half million dollars is still set, but we took about $123,000 that was going to go to Waste Away and got reallocated that to Griggs and Maloney, primarily through the preliminary master plan and the geotechnical services. So that's the crux of it, and I'm available for questions if you have any.
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to item 17. This is geotechnical services for the Qualified Biogas Facility on Butler Drive.
Yes, sir. This is in line with what you just approved. This is the geotechnical services contract with Griggs and Maloney. I know this may be hard to see, but we have encountered a significant void, some may call it a cave, underneath the site at Butler Drive. Those red dots represent where there is a void that was encountered when we did our track drilling for our geotech design, and you can see on the core drillings, those where I've shown a void, that's a 20-foot void that's there on one of those core drillings, and you can kind of see from the photograph that there's a, an underground, they call it a karst feature, again, some could call it a cave. There are ways to mitigate this, there are ways to design through micro piles and get the foundation of the facility set. It may be a little more expensive, but we've, it's good information to have, and we're actually asking for a little bit more on the geotechnical services to investigate further. So what was originally a $40,000 geotechnical expected expense is up to $83,750 with Griggs and Maloney. Again, we deducted that from some of the expense from Waste Away to keep the balance at 2.5 million for the total contract. So we would request approval for the geotechnical services with Griggs and Maloney. I'm available for questions if you have any.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we have the SCADA contract amendment.
Yes, sir. Again, this is the Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition Server. It was approved back in November of 2022. We are asking for an additional capacity request of $6,500. Maybe too much information, but a correction to the contract is in order. These two systems were approved at $187,787. The executed agreement only included one system, so we're really now amending the agreement to reflect what was approved on the two SCADA systems plus the 6,500. So the total is now $194,286. So just some cleanup here, if you've got any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Gore?
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we have Little John and Associates Engineering Task Order Amendment, Hobus Pipe.
Yes, sir. This Hobus Pipe, we've gone through several inspections over the past two years, checking the ovality of the pipe. This is large diameter, 30-inch through 48-inch pipe. We found that there is some significant deflection. We bid that project back in October. There were no bidders. We had to rebid, and also, in order to, I'd say, entice some, or solicit some bidders, we went through some temporary access easement delineation and some assistance from LJA, as well as getting some permit coordination with CSX. Their additional cost to rebid and perform those extra services is in the amount of $60,260. So we're requesting an amendment to their original design contract in that amount. Available for questions if you have any.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Continuing along with the Murfreesboro Water Resources Show, we'll get into construction contract for sewer rehabilitation.
Yes, sir. This is, this is the actual pipe rehabilitation contract that we did, we did get the one bid, the second go-around with SBW contractors, and the amount was for $9,945,158. So we're asking you to request the contract, subject to legal approval of insurance and the required sureties. This is an, this is an in-place lining rehabilitation, so there won't be any open, open cut and deep excavation.
So move.
Second. Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to SSR Engineering Task Order Amendment. This is the overall creek pump station.
Yes, sir. Again, there were several redesign requirements that we requested outside the scope of the original project. I did bring some construction photos to let you see the progress of the overall creek pump station. It's a very significant expansion that's going to open up a lot of sewer connections for the west side, the high-growth area in the Blackman area. The additional services request is for $37,498, and I'm available for questions if you, if you have any.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to resolutions. We have Resolution 23R11. This is for unclaimed property. Ms. Brown?
This is the annual request to the state to reimburse us or to repay the unclaimed property remitted by the city for any outstanding property that remains unclaimed and has met the required holding period.
Any questions for Ms. Brown?
So move.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right, you have several board and commission appointments in front of you. I'm scrolling through my list. You have an appointment at the Cable TV Board. Dennis O'Neill and Nathan Brown expire on, on April 30th, and they have both, our staff is requesting both of those to stay. You have the Murfreesboro Housing Authority, that is Michelle Thomas, who is staying on board, excuse me, I'll make sure that's right. Yes, yep. Michelle Thomas, and all the paperwork has been filled out for Michelle, and then your pension commission. We have reappointments of Earl Hall, Greg Sample, Aaron Tucker in the reappointments, and then Jennifer Brown is replacing Melissa Wright as the employee, or excuse me, as the finance, not finance, but recorder, correct? I can't forget your capacity that you're serving on that board.
City Recorder Finance Director.
Okay. And then Justin Burris is replacing Charlie Myatt, who Charlie served for many years on the, on the pension commission, so we want to thank him for his service.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
And one comment, I know we're missing a couple of council members. We've had this discussion, Mr. Gore and I had this discussion last week about a gentleman who served on the Water and Sewer Board for 28 years. You know, it's really tough to start replacing members who served on board and commissions for, you know, 30 years, but, you know, we're now getting to the point where we need, we appreciate that service and we appreciate that wisdom, but we really need to start getting more people involved into our, into our boards and commissions. So as you see those appointments, we'll have, Craig, if you don't mind, maybe asking Brenda and Kenya to send an updated list. There's several people who are coming due on June 30th, but maybe council members look, and if you have people that, you know, you know that would want to be involved, and to those who are watching on TV, we have over 250 people who are involved in our board and commissions that do a lot of the advisory work that comes to the City Council, and, you know, the more that we appoint the same people on there, although we appreciate everyone serving, we need to make sure that we get more people involved into these boards and commissions. So, all right, we'll move in, any licensing?
No, sir.
Any statements to be paid?
Not tonight.
Okay. Any other business from staff?
We will meet next Wednesday for a workshop, 11:30 at the airport.
Any other business from council members?
Just noticed that this weekend is Jazz Fest out at the Fountain, so if you're, it's a change of venue, and, but the event goes on, and a lot of young people in our area schools that have played jazz will be performing out there, so I encourage everyone to go out to, to see them and hear them this weekend.
And the First Saturday Market on the Square Saturday also.
Starts, mhm.
A couple things to consider. There's a lot of, being in the middle of this, both of my boys graduate, their last day of school was today, but you've got a lot of seniors in our community that are going to be graduating here in the next week or two, so if you see a senior, you're not there yet, are you, Kurt?
Not there.
The, the last thing.
Senior has two connotations.
That's right. We've had quite a bit of conversation over the last couple of weeks, and had a really good conversation with Chief Bowen yesterday. The muffler in racing cars in Murfreesboro has gotten to be worse over the last year, and I didn't realize this, that when we talk, one of the things that has caused that, and I'm not saying whether I'm for this or against this, but when emissions was discontinued at the state level, it has really caused people to be able to put straight mufflers and muffler headers onto their cars, because now they don't have to go get their exhaust systems tested. And we are consistently getting emails and correspondence. There was a thing on Channel 5 the other night about a lady on Haynes Drive that was trying to catch people. So we're going to figure out, that's one of the chief's pet peeves as well, to try to come up with some program to stop, start promoting that, you know, for those of y'all that are watching, it is against the city code and city ordinance to be able to have straight mufflers and to be able to have headers and all the things that go at, where mufflers and to be able to have headers and all the things that go where you may be going 15 miles an hour, but it sounds like that you're idling around a NASCAR track. So the Murfreesboro Police Department is putting a focus on that. There are fines for that if you get caught and having to come to city court. So if you're a parent and you've bought your kid, a 16- or 17-year-old kid, a high-performance car, you need to know that you're going to be the one responsible for that. And we all are receiving complaints about that consistently, and that's something that's going to be a focus over the next many months. So wanted just to make sure that we let people know that. John? I'm going to yell "get off my grass" here in a minute, you know, like the old man now, so.
Crossy the old man.
I'm just tired of getting comments from people complaining that, you know, cars are racing at 11 o'clock at night, so hopefully we'll catch those guys. But if you have any comments or concerns, always you can notify us as a council, and we'll make sure and get your response back on that. With that, we'll stand adjourned.